... drawing for pleasure.
................................................................................................................................. Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment.
We'll close public comment and we're going into special presentations. Tonight we have presentation for students.
So, tonight, we have the honor of honoring a couple of students here from Highland School District. Tonight, from the elementary level, we have Kyle Meneses. So Kyle, why don't you come on up here? I'm going to talk a little bit about you and tell all these people why you're such a great student, such a great kid to have in our school. We're so proud of you on so many fronts. Kyle is an avid swimmer with the Hawks and New Haltz. He goes to karate. He does violin lessons. Locally here in town, we don't have a violin program in our school, but he does them on his own here in town at Jacobs. He also plays the clarinet and the bass clarinet in our instrumental program. Kyle's a very smart young man, works very hard. We're so proud of him and we're just so impressed with all that you do, that you squeeze into this schedule and you're always happy. It's so wonderful to see. We know great things are going to happen for you. So this is the first of many awards I'm sure that you're going to receive in your lifetime and I'm so proud that I'm the first one to get it. Let's take pictures. I know mom and dad want one over there, so. Excited about that? Thanks Kyle, I'm so proud of you.
Good evening. Unfortunately, it looks like our student of the month was not able to be here. I knew they were having some scheduling issues. They were trying to work it out, but it doesn't look like they were able to attend. So, our student of the month for the middle school is Janelle Landell. And normally, one of the things the teachers wrote was so just right on, I could not say it better myself, so I'm just going to read what she wrote. "Janelle is a student who you can always count on to be prepared, to work hard in all of her classes. Not only does she try her best at everything, she always has a smile on her face while doing it. On top of working hard, she is also helpful, respectful, and an overall wonderful person who deserves to be recognized for all the amazing things she does and the amazing person that she is." And at middle school, we work really hard at developing citizenship.
Rewind.
Rewind. You know what, maybe you want to do the high school real quick while they settle in and then I'll jump back, is that alright?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here as the principal of Highland High School to announce the student of the month for October 2018. Jake Duncan, come on up so I can talk a little bit about it. Congratulations Jake. So Jake is a sophomore, he's a class officer, he's a musician, and he's an athlete. A member of our C track, varsity wrestling, and varsity football, Jake has been described by his teachers as respectful, dependable, kind, and a diligent young man. According to his football coach, Jake's work ethic, positive attitude, and character makes him a strong leader among our student body. And in my view, Jake is a true modern day renaissance man. We wish more of our students were like Jake Duncan, so congratulations Jake. Keep up the good work. Okay, thank you. Janelle, if you want to come up? Congratulations. Okay, so I'm going to read something one of your teachers said about you. Alright? "Janelle is a student who you can always count on to be prepared, to work hard in all of her classes. Not only does she try her best at everything, she always has a smile on her face while doing it. On top of working hard, she is also helpful, respectful, and an overall wonderful person who deserves to be recognized for all the amazing things that she does and the amazing person that she is." So congratulations on being student of the month for October.
Kyle, I'm sorry. Kyle, I've got to tell you. My husband and I went to the Hudson Valley Philharmonic Show Saturday night, or yeah, I think it was Saturday night. And I was amazed at all the young musicians there, particularly the violinists. There had to be about fifteen of them and how young they were. And I think I'm going to be seeing you up there someday.
On behalf of the board, congratulations to our student of the month.
Okay, your state assessment grades three eight, Saturday morning two or?
Karen is going to.
Everyone should have a copy of this up their seat.
I am excited to talk to you about the board results tonight. Our grade through eight presentation. Just wanted to start, we have a new baseline this year. For those of you that aren't familiar with the way the state test has gone, we've gone from a three day to a two day testing format. We also have a new baseline, so they're saying it's very difficult to make a clear comparison between the last year's test and this year's test. But when you're looking at proficiency, but you definitely can see the growth, which we're going to show you. And it's easier to compare the next two years coming up because the test is going to be very similar the next three years. So 2018, 2019, 2020, the test will be very, very compatible and much easier to share. And then we're going to have 2021 more like the next generation standards. So I want to start with the performance summary for ELA. If you look here, our grade levels are over here, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Across the top, we have our number of students, our levels one through four, three and four being proficient. And under each, we put a number with the percents because the end value is so small, so you can kind of see, you know, if you have the number fifty and it's two students, it kind of is a little misleading. So we give you the number with the percentage. And I really want to point out to you, look at third grade, our level threes and fours proficient. We're up to sixty percent of kids proficient. And you can see it growing as we go through. And it's not uncommon when we look at learning with kids for it to pivot. It's a normal pivot for kids. And we look really good. Our numbers are growing, they're growing steadily. It's not a sprint, but we're growing very smoothly and that's what we want to see. So if we compare this and we compare it from the year 2013, 2014, 2015 up through, and we look at grades three through eight in ELA, we can see we started out in 2013, 14, the beginning of the Common Core standards, going from twenty-six percent proficient. And we're looking at threes and fours, twenty-nine, forty-one, forty-eight, and we're now at sixty-one percent. So we can really see that growth moving for our students. And it's nice to see this. Looking at the math, when we jump there, we can see our math proficiency summary report, just like with the ELA, grades three through eight, our students' levels one through four, three and four being proficient. We gave you the numbers with the percents. We're growing again. We look through our threes and our fours. You can tell we're way above fifty percent at this point. Nice to see that with our kids. And we do really well. Our eighth grade, our numbers are low when we look at three and four. But we have to remember with our eighth graders, twenty-four of them took the Algebra I. And the state for some reason doesn't report those Algebra I's in with the eighth grade assessment. We kind of wish they would because it would look better. But we have to count them and I gave them out for you. Thirteen got a five. Let me just go back. Hit. Well, thirteen got a five. I believe four. Thirteen got a five, five got a three, zero got a two, five got a four, and then one got a one. So our students did really well, proficient or better. It was just one student. So twenty-three scored proficient or better, three or above. So that was nice to see. And I jumped ahead with this.
Karen, if you use a clicker, maybe you can go back.
Go back?
Or you could hit page up, page down. It's very easy.
Thank you. So we look here at our five year proficiency summary with our math. We see here again, three through eight, 2013, start of the Common Core, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. We see that our math proficiency, we've jumped to sixty-five percent, which is great when we look at these scores. And we can go up through and see how we're doing. Again, that's because we have the Algebra. What's taking our eighth grade is our lower students because the higher ones tend to take the Algebra and which is pretty common. So they take the Algebra I regions. And then if we can compare these proficiencies, three through eight, I wanted you to take a look at last year and this year, statewide for math in ELA, region.
And what's included in the region Karen?
A region is fifty districts, the four counties. Bolster Boses, eight districts, just Bolster County. So this is, when we look, we're outperforming in our ELA fifty districts. That's good. And our math, we're a little behind, but we saw it, it's slow and steady. And I really want to point out to you that this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. A sprint, we get there fast, we don't know if we're going to keep it or how we got there. A marathon takes time. Our teachers are very dedicated, they're very hardworking, and they're getting to where we need to be. And it really shows great progress of where we're at, where we've been, and where we're going. So I think the forecast looks very good.
These figures are, this is good, this is good. But what work, or what work do we plan on doing to get more kids to take these tests for this year?
Oh, to take the test, you mean for the refusals?
For the test, the three through eight, because we have a dogged problem with outdumps.
Right, so I think I had mentioned that I'm going to be incorporating that into my Monday messages. So they're catching on, I was just at the boys hockey game and two parents came up to me, "I love your Monday message." I save it, I make sure my children listen to it. So most of them have been for the students, but I'm going to slowly morph into them being for the parents. And I'll explain that, that we're going to start a campaign and maybe about six weeks, four weeks before the test, telling the parents, this is, we have a four week program for the parents. It's a four-part Bon Jovi series of why you need to have your students take the tests. And here's why. And I'm going to give them the little tidbits each week. But I think that will help kind of get the ball rolling.
And we have seen more students take the test the last two years than the previous year. I mean, we're slowly seeing, especially in our third and fourth grade, our elementary numbers have been higher. The biggest difference, and you can see it on, where you look at the number of students who took the test, that the seventh and eighth grade is the biggest area, where we have the highest number of refusals. And you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that beyond the parents themselves too. So I think, you know, that's a big focus for us. I do think that reducing the number of days that the students are testing from three to two has had a positive impact for parents. I think decoupling the results of the assessments from teacher evaluation, I think that that has had an impact. So I think slowly, but surely, we're working our way up. We're also, we said before, neighboring districts have very high refusal rates and there's a lot of crossover. So we're continuing to work, continuing to have the conversations with teachers.
I'm hoping to see a buy-in because it's just been a problem for years. Do you think that these scores will get us out of our, see, I don't know what cities and I don't know the acronym anymore, the city status. Do you think that this will help us get out of city status or is this not?
No, this will have, they don't have the subgroup data out yet. And like you were saying about the refusals, it looks like it's bottomed about a year ago, two years ago, and we're on the rise. So I think that we're going to see the numbers go up and up. Because when we, like when I talked to Joel and the other principals, kids that aren't taking the test are high performers. So when we were talking about, oh, this kid or this kid took the test, what would the results be? You know, so I think we're going to see a very different population take the kids and I think it's going to get better each year.
So when you said the subgroups, you're waiting for the subgroup numbers?
Yeah.
When is that going to be reported?
Late with everything this year. Usually the subgroup would be out right now. They haven't given us the date for subgroup. So this data that's out now is usually out in the end of August, middle to end of August. So I'm thinking the subgroup's probably end of November, sometime in December.
So we will know if we're back in that status around December?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be there.
My understanding is that we, they're all these designations this year because of the new test and because of every student who sees, as of the federal legislation, it's a transition year. So we're kind of all at baseline right now. And then we'll look at next year. You know, one thing that could be an indicator when we were looking at, we still have to, or we still receive a growth score for our teachers from state ed, even though it's not connected to their evaluation. And when I looked at those, the growth scores were all positive. They were all but a couple were in the effective or highly effective range. So to me, that's a pretty good sign that we're showing growth in the students who are taking the test. So even if it's not showing that everyone is, you know, at a four, it's showing that they are making progress from where they were the year before. So hopefully, again, we see the subgroup, we can look at individual groups of students. And then we're doing the work of looking at each individual student by grade level or within content areas depending on the building they're in.
Working as individually, each grades as well. And our building score combined for ELA and for math fell ineffective, which is great. That's great for us. I was, I think skipping around the office when I saw those and I came in on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Thanks Karen, I appreciate it.
Next is our flex program.
Good evening, guys, and thank you for having me to come to let me talk about our program. We're very proud of our new work-based learning experience that we're doing at Big Lots. I put on everyone's desk before the meeting started a copy of the PowerPoint. There's a lot that I put on there, pictures and some quotes from the students. So if you want to take time later and read through, I wanted you to be able to have it. You also have muffins on your desk that the kids made this afternoon for you all. So a lot of them could have come tonight, so they still wanted to be able to be part of it. So they made some blueberry and chocolate chip muffins for everyone. So hopefully, they're good. So we're doing, it's work-based learning, which is able for us to be able to bring our learning from the school and bring it into workplaces. This past summer, I went to a few different local businesses and establishments and I looked for ones that hired children with disabilities after they transition out of high school. So Big Lots is one of those places, so I figured this would be a great place for us to work. So that way, when the kids transition, they would have some experience there and already kind of have that connection and networking to be able to join Big Lots. So we kind of bring learning to the real world. So we use the Big Lots across the river, so in Poughkeepsie. And Big Lots provides us to be able to align our learning to the standards. So there's definitely some benefits for the students. There's many of them, I just listed a few here. So being able to bring both academic and technical things into the real world instead of using a pretend cash register, we're able to use a real world one. So to be able to, we practice in the room and then we bring it to the business and we're able to try out real things. They're also able to establish a real connection between school and work. So they're seeing that the things that they learn in the classroom, that there are things that they will use, such as problem solving, their social skills, all the different areas. It also helps us to find out some of their likes. So by being able to try different jobs at Big Lots, then they see, are they someone that likes to stock? Are they someone that likes to clean? Are they someone that wants customer service? So being able to do this, the kids are able to kind of see what career options and choices that they might like for employment opportunities. It also helps us be able to develop habits that are workplace friendly. We touch base a lot on professional attire to wear, how do you speak in a workplace, being on time, how important it is to hold all these standards. It's also good for the students to have, I'll just read a couple more of them. So it's kind of being able to expand and participating in authentic jobs rather than, again, just doing kind of role-playing. And they're also able to see how other real-world workplace people work with each other. So they get to see how the manager is interacting with the employees and how the employees are interacting with each other. So they're able to observe all those real-life experiences. So I added some pictures in, so this is our students at Big Lots. On the way to Big Lots, we try to incorporate different games. So we do either looking for road signs, looking for vehicles, looking for local places. They might have a check-off and they have to say, "We passed the post office, we passed a bank." Did you, what grocery stores did you pass? So those are some of the things that we do while we're on the bus. So that way, we're constantly learning. So the students are often given, I have sheets that Big Lots provides me with and it shows what the display should look like. And then the students will have to use their sheets to work as teams and set up the items on the shelf. That's one of the tasks. Every week, I do employee of the week. So we do it weekly so that every child gets to continually become, you know, employee of the week and we work on different skills. And they take a great deal of pride in this. So this week, we were working on respect, communication skills, being team-oriented, strong work ethic, being dependable, positive attitudes, and also being self-motivated so that they're trying to become more independent in all aspects. These are them just doing some more of the different jobs. They do a variety of tasks. One is they go through the aisles and they fold all the towels or the sheets. They organize the different areas, which is also a plus because then they can learn where would something belong? Where would towels go? Would you put them with the food section or, you know, things that go in the refrigerator? As well as tools and hammers. So there's just some more pictures. The kids really truly love it. We also are going to have, we ordered from Pro forma, one of the local Highland businesses, apparel for the kids to wear so that they're able to have their own uniform. So it has our Highland logo and Husky, so we can kind of have our brand recognition while also having a little Big Lots label on there too, so that they feel like employees. They have little backpacks, so that way they can bring, you know, any necessities. So they really feel like they're going to work. And then we also do the laundry for the clothes that they wear. So that way, they're able, the shirts and, you know, they really are taking full responsibility of how you would be as an adult. It also benefits the employers that we are working with. It improves their employee retention because then the other employees seeing, you know, us in there and the positive attitudes. And the manager was actually telling me the other day how us being in the store really has increased the morale of their own workers because the kids have such, you know, way about them that they're smiling and saying hi. They never come like, "Oh, I want to be here." They're always like, "Yeah, I want to be here," you know? They're like, "We don't want to go home." And it also helps them be able, they're already kind of pre-trained for to be able to have these jobs because, again, they do hire at the Poughkeepsie-Big Lots students that, you know, have had special needs. And this way, they're already kind of learning it and it could be a future employer for them. It also helps them reduce some of their costs. We really do make a difference when we're there. Mr. Bon Jovi visited with us this week and.
I have to say, I wanted to go to see what they did before this presentation. And they work. This isn't them going and fooling around in the aisles. I mean, you see, they are working the entire time. So an aisle, you know, Big Lots, you know, there's this kind of, the shelves are all messy, everything's out of place. And when they're done with that aisle, it's perfect. And I worked, I was exhausted. You bend it up and down and my knees are cracking and everything. My back's killing me. But really unbelievable. And as this fellow said, you know, "Oh, there's toothbrushes in the snack aisle." And then we have, "Well, where does this go with?" "Oh, this goes with bathroom things." "Okay, let's find the bathroom things." And it was incredible. They are just on task the whole time and really learning real-life skills.
Thank you, yes, I couldn't say it better. And that's what makes me so happy when we're there, to be able to see that they're really learning real-life things and they're taking this so seriously and it really is a wonderful experience. Oh, and also, I forgot on the other slide, it also, I feel like it's showing them that you give back to your community because you're working in local places. You know, we're doing different things to help our community, which I'm always telling them is really important. It also benefits us as a school because we're exposing the students to different technologies and different places. And then we're able to expand our learning from the classroom into the workplaces. It also helps us meet the needs of the diverse students. So these children that need life-scale, real-life experiences, we're able to give it to them by going. And it also helps me be able to individualize our education because I can go by what tasks might they be better at? What one student might be best at and I'm able to feel to help them get into their job niches. And it also helps promote and foster us going into the community. And people in the community seeing the school district, you know, everybody, the customers now start to say like, "Oh, Highland's here, you know, the kids from Highland." So it also kind of gets out there to, you know, people throughout the different towns that we're out there and how of a positive attitude that we have. So I have some of Mr. Bon Jovi, so you can see he really.
That's where my knees cracked.
And they're really great at Big Lots too. We have Eric who's in a wheelchair and they're great about it. He's still able, you know, to do all the same stuff. And we take him in his wheelchair and still you can see the huge smile he's got on his face and it's really great. And Big Lots is perfect because it really is kind of a messed-up store like the.
Oh, for, if, I'm sure the manager wasn't there when I went, but what an advantage to this store because we're saving them so many hours of work time by having our students do this because they would have to do it.
Definitely. And also, so we have some of the community benefits. So it's creating that environment of collaboration that I was talking about through the school, employers, the community. It's always encouraging that respect, the tolerance, and understanding among different groups. So a lot of people are starting, you know, they're becoming more accepting. And we're also continuing to build a more productive economy for our local area and fostering the confidence that we're able to get out there and be observed. I have a few quotes. I had actually every one of the students, I wanted them to tell me what they thought of. I had actually every one of the students, I wanted them to tell me what they thought of Big Lots and their personal opinion. And then I have another page in there that says how that's going to help them reach their goal and what might their goal be. So every one of them is something that they came up with. So I'll just read a couple, but you guys have them to do there. So it says, "My favorite part of working at Big Lots is when I'm given the job role to fold towels and organize them on the shelves." So that's Jasmine. "My favorite part of working at Big Lots is working with a partner to organize the kitchen department at Big Lots. I'm able to reach the higher shelves when my partners can't."
Yeah, Tyler's tall. He even signed all the top shelves.
And it's awesome, because it lets them feel very needed and important, because we need Tyler, he's got to reach that high shelf. "My favorite part of working at Big Lots is when my job role is shelf recovery. This requires me to organize, match the products to the labels and prices. I pull each item to the front, so that the customers are able to see what products are available." "My favorite part of working at Big Lots is that I have the job role of greeting customers. I enjoy smiling and talking to customers and other employees. I enjoy making others happy." That's definitely Eric to a T, because he doesn't ever know he goes. Even in a wheelchair, he's like, nothing can get him down. "My favorite part of working at Big Lots is returning items to the department they belong. I feel happy and proud when I organize the messy shelves and make them neat." Isabella. "My favorite part of working at Big Lots is organizing the food department. I enjoy this, because I get to see all the products the store has to offer." Joa. Then she goes back to go shopping. And then I had them, oops, let's go forward, that's okay. I had them write little sayings, because I told them in case they weren't able to be here. So it's just their little sayings on little blurbs. And just a couple of their goals. So they had their goals with what they enjoyed. So it says, "My goal is that working at Big Lots and learning how to fold towels, sheets and blankets will help prepare me to work at a local hotel for my future career." So we're putting in all different transition needs, so that way I'm able to help, you know, then, there's other things that we can focus on. "My goal is that working at Big Lots will help me learn to work well with others." Tyler. "My goal is that working at Big Lots will teach me how to organize and display, so that customers want to purchase the items. This is important, so that the store doesn't go out of business." So I'll let you guys... And I just wanted to give a special thanks out to Patrick, because he's always so supportive and anything that I ask of him and that we can do. So I wouldn't be able to do it without you, thank you. And thank you for all the administrative, I wouldn't be able to do it without you guys. We loved having Mr. Bon Jovi come and the Board of Education as well, for always supporting us and making this possible. So then, I have here, there's just a whole bunch of slides. So you guys have them on there, I'll just kind of quickly go through them. But it's different things that the kids were, were working and...
Yeah, was this just one day or are you going multiple days?
Oh, no, yes, we go multiple days. Yeah.
How long, how long does it last?
We go Monday through Thursday. And then we're there for about an hour, a little bit more than an hour. So the kids, so that way, it's like they check in at work, so we have to, you know, be there by a certain time. And they get very upset, like if there's traffic on the bridge, or we're late. It's going to be sad, we're going to be in trouble. You can't be late to work. And I'm like, "It's okay, guys, it's, you know, you know, we're trying our best, we're on a school bus." So yeah, we go Monday through, um, Thursday.
Do other schools come in the other hours, or are we the only one doing this?
Um, I'm not sure at that Big Lots, that there's other schools coming in and doing it. I know other schools do something probably similar, but I think we're the only ones.
There's other places, there are some school districts that use this Big Lots as well.
Oh, this is tough, it's powerful.
What times?
What?
What time of day do they go?
In the morning, we're only there like a 10 to 11. Yeah? And it's really cute, because a lot of times, family members will pop in and visit them. So we've had like grandmas pop in, or, and they're like, they get so excited, they're like, "Oh my goodness, what are you doing?" It's nice to have their family and friends, get to see them. Because for some of these students, this is the only option they have as a job right now. And they're getting to that age where they really want to have a job, because a brother or sister does. So this way, they're able to fulfill that, so that it's really exciting. This is actually...
So this will be for the whole school year?
Yes.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah? Yeah? And this is the, the management staff, so they took a picture. So you can even see on their faces, you know, they really enjoy having us there and they're really happy to have us.
How did you find them, or did they find us, or?
No, I went around honestly this summer, and I just went to lots of different businesses. And I said to them, I kind of pitched the... Yeah, so I went in with a smile and I pitched it, and you know? I showed a couple pictures of the kids, you know, doing other things that we did last year. And I told them, you know, what I was kind of looking for. And they were the best fit out of the ones that I picked, because...
Close by, check back, someone, right by max.
We're right over the bridge, so it's a short commute. And it's somewhere that this really could transition for after high school, that they could work there. You know, my future classes might come in to visit them one day that they're working, you know, on the store. Yeah, so, yeah, it was, it was great.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Great job.
And they're all your muffins, so they're, they worked hard on those too.
All right, you got to beat that out.
I'll want to be here, I think I will.
All right. It's Mike, what I tell many meetings, because working on the business side will... Right, receive really what it's all about, so very nice to be here. Audit went very well this year. Important part of what we do each year is a review of your business procedures and internal controls and the testing of transactions, to see that procedures are being followed. We had no issues in any area. Your business staff did a great job. And I think you should know too, that your treasurer Tara, her skills greatly improved. Did a fabulous job this year. And the rest of your staff too. Payroll Kathleen, Marcy and Payable, and of course Jill, all do their job very well. They're very conscientious. So we're in a, we're in a good place. The other thing, not to embarrass anyone, but I think you'll find you hit the jackpot, bringing Lisa on board. I won't say anymore, she shouldn't like me saying that.
Thank you, no, thank, don't.
That's okay.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Financially, your financial condition continues to improve. You finally got the general fund, unassigned fund balance up to 4%. And your reserves are increasing. So that's all good, you know? I feel like I've been on a long journey here with, you know, with the district, which I have. Been enjoyable. And we're getting to a real good place. We looked at the budget. The budget appears to be very well prepared and executed. Almost 97% of it is used, which is good. Leaves that little cushion with 97, I don't have many schools that spend 97%. So yours is good. Let's just leave it at that. So other than that, it's all positive. Probably the best audit we've had here in years.
Oh, see, I'm bond rating that up again?
Yeah. Your other funds are good, capital project is winding down. Financing is done with that, so it's all good.
Yeah, I was thrilled with the report to actually go in there and see none of the highlighted areas. There's always recommendations for improvement, but I doubt it. Could have Mr. Bon Jovi and the team. Staffing, the last several years, we were dealing with some staffing issues in that focus. So I really hope the teams come together.
Well, I think bringing the payroll clerk back in.
Yeah, right.
Let Tara learn her position. I worked with her a lot. I know what we did before she left. And we got no better mentor than Lisa right now, because Lisa's very strong in finance.
Yeah, we heard and we're very excited.
Yes, we are.
No, yeah.
You hit a homerun there in baseball.
That's enough.
So I don't know if anybody had any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I did have one question, I just, I have a hard time understanding, is the retiree cost, I think it was a change made in both...
Or health insurance?
Yes, yes. The health insurance for retirees is 2.6 million a year. I think that's what the report said. Does that include the, the BOSI's portion, or is that somewhere else?
No, that's, we have somewhere else.
It is, yeah, because that might have something changing.
That's just our...
That's just Highland.
So that's just us, is that a net, is that our net cost after the deductions of the employee-paid portion?
Yes, it's your cost.
That's our net cost? And that also includes the Medicare B reimbursement?
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever you're paying, yeah. But the whole, the whole thing with this HOPEHAB, they call it, you know, other post-employment benefits, which is your retirees' health insurance. In the prior years, say the last eight, nine, 10 years, was they add, was under the GADB 45, which you hire an actuary every year and they come up with these numbers.
Yeah, liability.
Yeah. And then it was, you were able to amortize it. So they came up with, say, a $40 million liability, but yours would just be around 18, 19, 20 as time went on. Now, the accounting gods, as I call them, wanted to match kind of what they did with the pensions with TRS and ERS three, three years ago. So now you're, the liability, actuaries are figuring these liabilities with different formulas. Everybody that's gone up, and then you have to show the entire liability on the conversion part of the financial statement. So you were, you were like, you got it right here. $28 million last year, now on your, on your financial statement, it's $97 million.
That's all that, yeah, yeah.
What does it mean?
Nothing.
Now, we, we sit in the office and say, "Well, if this is projected out as what you're going to pay over time, why can't we book a receivable? Because we know we're going to get state aid over time." But nobody else sees it that way, so. I'm doing schools with 192 million, $200 million liabilities. It's a joke. That's what the account... If you were in regular business, you know, this isn't an IBM or something, this would be your financial statement with this liability. Schools, you're on the fund accounting, modify accrual, it doesn't mean anything to you. Your bond people know that, when you go to borrow, they don't look to say, "Oh, you owe $100 million." But that's what we're dealing with now, so. You want?
Anyone have any questions? We're going to need a resolution to... So there are any questions on the...
Thanks all.
Thank you.
All right, thanks to Alex.
And not business and operations.
I think it's under business.
I looked, I didn't see it.
Yep.
We don't need to approve the independent orders on the... The extracurricular activity funds?
It's all in the...
It's all in that one?
Yeah, it covers everything.
Yeah, do you have any questions on anything? Yeah, there's any, have any questions on the extracurricular activity funds? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to acceptance of reports. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Our Board of Education meeting minutes, September 18th, 2018. Treasurer's report, September 2018, which is the general fund, school loan fund, special aid fund, the capital fund, or attendance in enrollment period one, and internal claim audit report. Motion, please. Motion by Tom, second, by Camille. Discussion?
I have a quick question on the claim audit. Two questions, I guess. In the last column, it says if it was corrected or not. And some of them say yes, some of them say no, and some are just like. So I'm assuming if it's yes and it was corrected, that it was paid. And if it's no, then it wasn't paid. And if it's like, which just means that we're waiting on whatever to be corrected before the payment.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
And then there was one item that was listed on there that didn't have any information. It was on the 810 check register.
I see 733. I'm not sure if that was for the same vendor, but I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I saw the question with the attendance enrollment report. What, I noticed that the enrollment defining, let's consider it significant, enrollment defines. Is there, what, you know, what's average for the area?
I'm not sure what would be considered significant. We should look, you know, I haven't really looked at that. We should look at a trend of the last five years.
Yeah, I mean, we were taking a look at that, where, you know, especially around budget, section counts, is there ability to reduce? But it was kind of dispersed over the K-12 grades. It wasn't in any particular one building or anything like that.
Yeah, it looks like every few years, we'll have like a small class. Like the kindergarten class, it's like a smaller class.
I mean, it's, there's been some deep, you know, like over 100 students, I gather, over the past, I think it's eight years. But, you know, an average would be to divide that number by the number of years. But again, those populations don't, aren't really focused in any one area. They're spread through the K-12.
If you looked at Ulster County as a whole, since I'm on the BOSI board as well, all districts are declining, in all of them.
That's a new phenomenon, right?
A lot of it could, yeah, I just think it'll be a...
Yeah, there was only two districts in the, this whole area, in Hudson Valley, who had increases. Everyone else has gone down. But it's, like Mike said, it is spread out. And we'll take a look at the section size.
The other phenomenon is, I'm always curious when I see those reports, that, you know, do you have students who move away? And they also like come back. And it depends on, is the family in transition or what's the dynamic there? But I know we've experienced some of that as well. They're not always like new students coming back from this.
All the jobs?
Just a quick question on the attendance report on suspensions. The current that took place on September 18th, didn't include any out-of-school suspensions? Because I only see three there. So there were no suspensions involved in that current on September 18th?
No, it's three. Three out-of-school on September, out-of-school suspensions and a high school.
Just three?
But the current that took place the evening of September 18th, didn't include any suspensions?
No.
So they were occurred after?
Correct. No.
Okay, any other questions? I do, just one quick one. In the attendance and enrollment report, if a student in K, if a student in the school moves out to an out-of placement, are they still included in that total number of kids? Or are they represented down below in the out-of-district placement areas?
So if they move out like halfway through the year?
Sure. Yeah, say, you know, they were attending high school and now they're going to a program outside of the school at BOSI's, for example.
We would move, we would change it.
Okay.
Yeah, we would take them out.
Going backwards a little bit, the September 8th event that happened on...
Is that the event, was that the date? I would assume so. It was on a Tuesday night? No, that wasn't on September 18th.
Okay, any other questions? All hold the favor. I posed. Just staying on the Board of Education meeting minutes, because I wouldn't hear that evening. Okay, the curriculum and instruction are principles, just for Joel.
All right. All right, well, I want to thank all those that came out to support our PBIS fundraiser. Studley Lemick is there, Mr. Bon Jovi was there, Mr. Vakatsias, your children and your wife.
Yeah, they were there.
They were there, so thank you. Mr. Mizel was there.
That was the ice cream.
Mrs. Welsh, her family were there. That was an incredible evening, so I really want to thank Joe Verbi and Barbara Lemister, the business owners. They reached out a couple of years ago to see if we could do some kind of a fundraiser, and I think it tied in great with our PBIS program. We're always looking for new ways to raise a little bit of money, we, not a lot, it's just for some of the incidentals that we use in the school. So, the total came in today, and we raised just a little over four hundred dollars that night. So, thank you to the community for coming out and supporting. It was a fabulous night, the kids enjoyed themselves, it was, it turned out to be a beautiful, warm evening, so, one less scoop of ice cream for the summer, it really was a summer night, if it was tonight, you know, we might not get the turnout. Or, it was one of those many rain days that we've had.
Yeah.
So, I just want to thank them, and then also, just two of my staff members that really have, have put in a lot of extra time these, these first couple of months without having an assistant principal there. Erin Kalor, our special ed coordinator for K-2, and Sarah Moore, our school psychologist, they ran all of the IST meetings. I talked about the IST team and what that team does. Every year, we want to revisit the students that were being met on all last year. They, they ran every single one of those meetings, so that those kids did not have to wait six weeks for us to start talking about their progress. So, that was, I, they really went out of their way and spent a lot of time, so I just want to publicly thank them. Obviously, thank my old comrade there, Roseanne Romana, for stepping in and pinching for a little while, that was very, we were very thankful to have her. Dr. Araka is on, she started yesterday, she apologized she couldn't be here this evening, but she will be here at the next board meeting. So she had a great first day yesterday, and a great day today. We're looking forward to lots of good work coming up, so. That's really all I have, any questions? Just if I can chime in on, on Mrs. Adoma, we're down in like probably the last five years, we're down about forty students across the, the whole elementary school. We were right around eight hundred, we're at seven sixty-two right now, so, it's forty across the whole building.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
I have to say, it really was a lot of fun.
It was fun.
I, and I said, I have a newfound respect, I said that in my report, I have a newfound respect for ice cream.
Yeah.
Depending on the flavor, if they ordered the cotton candy, it was hard as a rock.
And it was really hard.
We all, we all said not it when someone ordered cotton candy.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll add that I talked a little bit of our, our STAR assessment, benchmark assessment. But, at the faculty meeting on Monday, Karen came over and helped us as a staff start looking at the way STAR reports our ELA assessments that we took. And then today, I sat in a CPT meeting talking about students, and immediately those assessments were being used to talk about that student. So, there is the direct impact of using that information. Gives us much further insight into the kid and what's going on, and what may be a problem, and teachers can talk about it in a different way, having that data immediately available to us. So, Karen, thanks for coming over and helping out with that, and the impact of, we're seeing. So now we're progressing with, we'll start with math assessments, which we've just been start, signed up with for STAR, and gonna be doing the same thing with that.
Just a quick question, the change, so we're changing the assessment tool that we're using, right?
Yes.
So, in terms of comparability to last year, so does that affect our ability to do that, or?
Um, no, STAR is, when I start using it, start seeing what it can do, and with Karen's help, be able to get into that, it's so complete and thorough in reporting information, it gives us so much, where the system we were using before really did not do that for us, all right, so.
What about the benchmark that they put in place?
Well, we're still using the benchmarks.
We're still using the benchmarks.
Because that's a more kind of an internal check for, for teachers, but the, the STAR allows a more individualized understanding of student thinking, you know, as an individual. Yeah, you can really see the weaknesses and strengths. And again, as, as Karen had mentioned, I think last meeting, it's nationally referenced, not just in Highland, not just in New York State, it's across the board, so, we're able to pinpoint a little bit more. With the benchmark, that's more of a indication of where we are as a district.
Okay.
Rather than, it's hard to pinpoint.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if you're using like the same assessment, just referring year over year with the child, how that would affect, you know, your comparability to last year and how they've grown, but, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, sometimes you, you'll just have to start with something.
This will be our second year using our internally developed benchmarks, so we'll be able to start looking at that comparability from year to year. We changed from a, a different purchase system that we used last year to STAR this year, because we like what it's able to, the information it's able to give us. Where the one we used previously was not as complete and complex as information.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hello again, everyone, I have three additions to my principal's report. On September twenty-seventh, I mentioned this last month, but it was just so wonderful, I have to talk about it again. On September twenty-seventh, a high school concert band performed with Professor Louie and the Chromatics for the first ever Highland High School rock concert. I was like, great, what an event. I went, and I was floored. I couldn't believe the opportunity that our students have to work and play music with such, this caliber of musicians. So afterwards, I had to do a little research, you know, who exactly are these people? I had heard about Professor Louie, I heard on the radio, I've been living in Hudson Valley thirty years or so, and, so I did a little research, I'm gonna just read a little bit to you. So based in Woodstock, Professor Louie and the Chromatics played one hundred and fifty shows per year in the US and worldwide, worldwide. They have thirteen studio CDs on the Woodstock Records label. The two thousand seventeen recording, Crowing the Blues, was the National Contemporary Blues Music Reports charts, in the top ten, twenty for the first quarter. They've been inducted into the Blues Hall of Fame, and they have been nominated for a Grammy Award. The members of the band include Professor Louie, he played with and produced the final three CDs for the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame group, The Band. John Platania is known for his great performances with Van Morrison for over thirty years. John collaborated with Van Morrison, creating some top hits, including Domino, the hit song Domino. He's also a Highland High School alumni. Gary Burke was the drummer and percussionist for, with the Radio City Music Hall Orchestra, and he recorded and played with many artists, including Bob Dylan and Joe Jackson. Miss Marie has written many songs for the Chromatics. Marie performed and recorded with Levon Helm, Rick Danko, Garth Hudson, and the Commander Cody Band, and was an integral part of the Mercury Rev's gold album Deserters Song. And finally, Frank Campbell, who played bass and vocals, was Levon Helm's music director with the Woodstock All-Stars Tour in the USA. This event was only made possible through the support of the Highland Educational Foundation. And the entire event was arranged by our band teacher, Dan Shaw. We hope that there'll be more concerts in the years to come. I mean, fantastic, if we do, if it happens again next year.
If they come again, you have to go.
Mind blown.
Yeah.
And, and when I was talking to the kids afterwards, our students, and they knew that these were big musicians, but I don't think they really will realize for a few years, until they realize what an opportunity they had, so fantastic. All right, that's number one. Number two, this Thursday night, October eighteenth, Mid Hudson School Study Council rolled their annual awards program at Anthony's Pier Nine in Windsor. I am proud to announce that two of our employees at the high school will be recognized. Sorry, Mary. For the, the first, Dr. Paff, our high school psychologist, Michael Paff, will receive the award for excellence in pupil personnel services. And, our very own Marion Ingram is going to be, receive the award for excellence in support services. And I can't think of a better award, more appropriate award, because she is my right hand here at the high school, and I, I just can't wait till Thursday night, so, sorry, don't embarrass her, Marion. I can't think of more deserving people, so, I'm really looking forward to that. So congratulations to Dr. Paff and Mrs. Ingram for this well-deserved recognition. Finally, Spirit Week. Two weeks ago, Spirit Week culminated with the homecoming game, it was one of the best Spirit Weeks that I've had, that I've seen here at Highland High School. I think Chrissy Police is gonna talk a little bit more about it, but I'm happy, I'll start, I'll, I'll just talk about the end. We won the homecoming game, but before that, for the pep rally, it was a close, close race all week. Depending on what the theme each day was, each class, grades nine through twelve, earned points based on their participation for the themes, if they participated in the themes. Sophomores had it all week, they were winning, they were winning seniors, I didn't see, didn't see them, they were probably third, less than a week.
They were like blindsided when we got them.
Out of nowhere, and every all the seniors kept the same, but really, we're gonna win, right? Because we have to win.
It's totally right, you just have to win.
I said, no, it's not right, we're just, whoever wins, wins. So, only because of what happened on Friday, which was the culmination of the, of the week, with their participation, and they won during the pep rally, we had a lot of minute to win it events, and I really think that if you guys hadn't won the tug of war, you would not have won. So, the day ended with, I was in the middle of the museum, I was surrounded by the class officers from each, from each of the class represented, and I had the Husky, this is Hudson the Husky, by the way, who lives in the main office, looking out the window. Hudson the Husky is our mascot, or one, I guess, is our, I'm happy to say that the seniors won. Hudson the Husky, they grabbed him, I thought I wouldn't see him in one piece of hair. Disappeared to the crowd, and I was like, no, where is he? And then he reemerged, and I got him, he's safe, he stays in the main office, they don't get to keep him, but they get the honor of.
Breaking rights.
Breaking rights. So congratulations to the senior class, and it, and it wasn't automatically gonna go to you, so. Anyway, congrats.
It's not like waterfalls.
No, I know, exactly, so. So Hudson will be in the main office staring out the window, he looks at the students as they walk by each day, he looks into the hallway. So, I'm happy to report, give a little more about your week, I think, from Chrissy. So, had you named him Hudson? We, we had, we had, we, we had a contest that people got to name him, and I believe Hudson was one of the, I, I put that name in, because we were trying to think of, well, we're, thank you, Mr. Bon Jovi, we're trying to think of names that are appropriate, I'm going, hm, Walkway, Walkway, over the Hudson Walkway, the Husky, and I'm like, Hudson the Husky. There were some other really nice ones, runner-up is Lloyd, and I, I was, I liked that one, Lloyd the Husky, I thought that was cool, but. But it ended with Hudson. Maybe each year we can rename him, I don't know. Oh, sorry, maybe Walk, Hudson the Husky, sorry, anyway. We're happy to have Hudson here in the school. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Something I missed, I'm, I'm sorry, on October twenty-third is our Don't Be a Monster presentation, which we've had for five or six years in a row now, it's an anti-bullying thing that we do in the school. They, wonderful, they come in, talk with our students, and November fifteenth is our career fair. This will be our third annual, so that's coming up. Okay, look out for that.
Okay. Directors report, anyone have any question for our directors? I know we have five or six reports for the team.
I just wanted to, on the technology one, thank you for putting that information in there.
Did that answer your question?
As far as, yes, I mean, it showed the number of cards and units per, per building that they have access to, so.
On that same line with technology, I know it's not all you, Carol, but are we putting a plan together? I know it's part of the technology plan, but what are we doing for the remaining, remaining monies in Smart School? Are we putting a plan together so the board can review it, take a look at it, and see what direction we're moving in? Is that something that's gonna happen soon?
That's one of the things at the, the retreat that we're doing early in November. We'll be bringing our thoughts to the table for that, so we gotta make sure we're all on the same page.
Sounds good. Anything else?
On the transportation update, there was, the last bullet was about the challenge to figure out homeless students. Just wondering if we could maybe get a little bit more information on that, as a follow.
The laws for homeless students have changed significantly within the past six months, and they came down from the federal government. In fact, there is a meeting, I think I've ever been around, about homeless and foster students. It's a very challenging situation when a family has to declare themselves as homeless, and they find themselves maybe in another district, maybe over in Taconic Hills, and they still have the right to choose where the children go to school. So obviously, we don't know when somebody will be, you know, homeless, but transportation is a challenge.
Because a lot of times, it's a small run, you know, you're like, once.
That's always been the case, right? Because I know we've talked about that before, so is, what has the change been in the law, I'm just curious.
I think adding foster students in with the homeless now is a change in the law. The foster laws, foster student laws have broadened significantly, so we'll be finding out more about them.
And I think probably what, I mean, this has continued to be a challenge, but I think we're also seeing an uptick in the number of people who are, they're homeless, so, get that, maybe where we're seeing the challenge a little bit more, because we have more students who might be, you know, further distances or across the county, or.
More situations, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
I, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Miller. I had an opportunity to go for a building tour last night with him, all three buildings, and I sincerely appreciate you taking your time, because I wasn't able to make it when the board went, and phenomenal, phenomenal job. Thank you very much.
I just got two quick questions, one for Maria. I'm not sure if there's a magic number there. You noted in your report, the end of September, we have seventeen hundred and twenty-four students, six hundred and sixty-one, or thirty-eight percent, qualify for free and reduce meals. I always thought there was a number, like forty percent was the next step in where we would be for additional aid, is that true, Lisa?
Yep, that is true.
Okay. So, I mean, are we moving in that direction rapidly?
I think your numbers are gonna probably fluctuate a little bit, because those include all the people that were getting free and reduced last year. They have thirty days into the next year to either reapply or fall off, so some just won't make it, and others will fall off.
So, we'll have a better idea, maybe October, November, where, where we are with those numbers?
Yeah, at the end of this month, I'll let you know.
But we've been pretty consistently between thirty-six and thirty-eight the last two years, probably. And when I looked, when we were starting that, the anti-pomery initiative, you know, I looked over the last seven years, our, our, our free and reduced number had gone up five percent in those six, seven years, I mean, it was drastic enough that, yeah, it definitely seems to be, although we've held kind of steady now in that thirty-seven, thirty-eight for a couple of years, so.
Right, yeah, hopefully that will come.
Yeah, and I think there also, that's also been a little bit of a change to either in our procedure or also from the, the government to really try to maximize the number of people who are applying for the free and reduced. You know, we're, they're trying to make it much more easy with downloads and all of that, too. We're able to capture more of the students than we maybe did in the past. So I, I think that's one of the reasons we saw a little bit of uptick, maybe it's a truer number than we saw previously.
Good. And my other last question is for Mr. Miller. I, I've read in your report that you've been meeting with Dale Automation for that final leg of our two thousand fourteen capital project. Is there a timeline when you feel, or they have established, to complete the card access and all that security pieces?
The actual beginning of the timeline hasn't been established yet, that will be shortly, but the project will last somewhere in the vicinity of fourteen plus or minus weeks, in their belief, as long as we don't have any hiccups or anything that hangs us up. I know we are doing some discussion about some door hardware that was currently installed, and whether it will be appropriate for the latch mechanisms and things that we have right now. So some of that review is going on, they'll be down here again next Tuesday to look at what, and door, everywhere that they're going to be trying to put card access in, to make sure that all that stuff is, what is. to make sure that all that stuff is what it's supposed to be, or what we have to do to change it to make it correct.
Is it your feeling to implement the new card access for this school year, or are we going to troubleshoot it and use it for September of nineteen? You know, at this point?
I think that probably would be very interesting to try to do it sooner than next September, but I think it probably will fall into a summer situation where you're gonna implement it to do both and switch out keys and cards at the same time, and everything might be quite difficult.
Sure, okay.
I think my concerns with that are, these are all safety features, and why wouldn't we want them in as soon as possible?
Good question.
I think as we, excuse me, I think as we put it together and we start to see, we might, might be able to, you know, assess whether we're gonna change the locks out on the outside of the buildings and have card access to the people that are allowed external entrance. And that could be much more simple than going with the whole route, but we'll have to see how it works out. It might be much more easier than we think it is, but I don't, you know...
I know I get asked about it often.
Sure. Peter, when you, when you spoke about, um, hardware on the exterior doors, is that existing hardware or new hardware in this current project that might not be compatible to the day automation system?
Well, when we went into, we went into that project, we were looking at pre-wiring the doors, which, because of Smart School's money wasn't there, and we did some work under the technology part of it that was paid for, some of the wiring for the, um, the doors. The question came up as to whether some of the strikes would fit, and whether they would work, and also whether the pushbars that were installed were the ones with the cellophones in them, so they'd have to pull back the door. The door hinges, the door hinges and everything were installed in most of the new doors with the capability of having electric wires come out to go to the pushbars. Whether the pushbars is the correct thing, and I know there was a discussion between Pat Flynn, the architect, and day automation, and there was some memos that went around about whether it was being corrected at the time, but I don't think it all went all the way through because it'd already been, smittles had already been made and things like that.
I mean, if everybody recalled my conversation in previous meetings, that, that was a big concern of mine, was the initial design by our design team, which would be Ashley McGraw, and their coordination with day automation. But we brought them on board, and I remember sitting in support service meetings way before Mr. Von Jovi came on board, that, that was going to work together, so we didn't run into an issue now where we bought hardware, and we're gonna be buying more hardware to make the system work. I think that's something that we should address with Ashley McGraw, because hardware's not cheap, and if you can start replacing panic devices because they weren't originally incorporated, or electronic strikes, what are we gonna do with it?
Exactly, I think, I think it was, uh...
I would like to have a support service meeting with Pat Flynn. I'm sure he's not in the shell up, but I'd like to be down here.
Well, there was, there was something, there was something that was missed somewhere along the line, because there were some memos that were floating around on that, so, um...
Yeah.
I don't think it, I don't think it went all the way to fruition of, this is what we're supposed to have, because it was like, there was a cutoff between...
You never got to that level of detail, it sounds like.
Well, it should've, but it didn't.
Right.
Look, if we're the board's FYI, we paid Ashley McGraw additional monies through negotiation to incorporate the Smart School project into our...
That design?
Two thousand fourteen project.
And that's in writing?
That's in writing.
Okay, any other questions? It's, um, Colombo Group is not overseeing any of the day automation work, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
But, the Colombo Group was involved in the original discussion with day automation, because I sat in a meeting with Ed and, I believe Tom was there, to support service, where, um, we asked the Colombo Group to review day automation proposal and negotiate it down. So they had some skin in that process.
And was that negotiated down?
I believe it was.
All right.
Uh, but in my, my, it doesn't stop at that point, because it's incorporated into a project that you're currently managing. So I think you have to make sure that that connection is still there between day automation, Ashley McGraw, and the needs of the district. I'm not sure if that was met.
My concern is, based upon discussions that we've had here at meetings, is that when that component of the project went to day automation, the other two firms were like, all right, stay automation.
Well, no, we pulled a hundred and sixty-something thousand, a hundred and forty thousand?
A hundred and forty something.
Hundred and forty thousand dollars out of Smart School money to put into the capital project to make sure the pre-wiring, the pre-wiring and all that was done ahead of time with the two thousand fourteen project.
It didn't come from Smart School's money. It came out of the capital project.
Capital project.
That, that was, that hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar chunk came, it was applied to the project to do the backbone of the system. So it was all done...
So still fell into the management of all money?
No Smart Schools, no Smart Schools money could be spent or allocated or contracts written or anything until it was approved.
Right, correct. Okay, so I guess, um, concerning our board is that we would like to see security as our priority at this point, if it can move forward.
Yes, but, you know, again, I, I don't wanna rush just to rush. You want it done right, it sounds like there's some prep work that needs to be done, and some conversations to be had, so that's, you know, if at, at some point we determine that it's gonna be best done over the summer, it would be great to put a tweet or some...
No, it's not to that point. We have a meeting on the twenty-third with our administrators to talk about what the, what the, to make sure everybody's still on board with what the project was and understands what it encompassed, and also talk about some of the things we can do with scheduling. Day automation is not waiting until next year to do it. We're gonna do it as soon as we can. Our decision is gonna be made whether, how much is gonna be done in the daytime and how much is gonna be done at night. And depending on how that works out, that will expedite it or not, so we'll see ourselves. There's no, there's no intent, no intent to delay it in any shape. It's to get done and be active as soon as possible.
Sure, good.
Any other questions?
Um, for food services, Maria, just wanted to say thank you for adding in that comparison. I think the numbers for September certainly look strong compared to last year. So, yeah, I appreciate that additional information.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, approval of committee on special education minutes be resolved. The Board of Education hereby accept the recommendation of committee on special education according to the minutes at CSE meetings of August twenty-eighth, along with the month of September sixth, fourteenth, twenty, twenty-first, and the month of October first and second. CSE, the amendment agreement, no meetings, August thirty-first, along with the month of September fifth, sixth, seventh, tenth, along with the month of October fifth. CSE meeting, no meeting, transfer then, August third. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Tom. Any discussion?
Yeah, a quick question, Patrick. There's a few students, probably under five in this report, from September eighteenth, don't have ID numbers?
From the eighteen?
Yeah.
You said September eighteen?
Well, yeah, so we have in our, I know it's not listed here in, in here, but the report that we have, that we're viewing, included within our, um, right here, is, it says September eighteenth, committee recommendation for Board of Education, review with details.
Okay, they just, each of the students are missing their student number?
Uh, it's missing student numbers.
Okay.
Not everybody, just, you know, probably three or four, maybe.
So that date needs to be added to the resolution, right?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see it here, and that was the other reason why I was questioning it, though.
I'll check it out.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Approval of committee on preschool special education be resolved. Board of Education hereby accept the recommendation of committee on preschool special education according to the CPSE meetings of September tenth, twenty-sixth, along with the month of October third. CPSE amendment, no meeting, September twenty-fourth. CPSE, no meeting, transfer, and they're none to report. This committee authorize the arrangements for such student special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Tom. Discussion? Um, any not real? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Under personnel, are we okay taking personnel from A through, wow...
Five C?
A through five C.
Not A through C.
No, A through...
A through C.
It's A through six.
No, it's numbers.
A through six.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like door routine.
Okay, some are, are changes in probationary periods, and...
Yeah.
Okay, we're good with that? Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Mike. Discussion?
Yes, so the, uh, under the amendment part, Sean Baggett, for LaRocca, Eric Meyer. So those people, we appointed them, but their date of actual start date changed. So we're just amending that, so it's correct. We correct their start date, we correct their tenure cycle and the permanent status. You can see Jane Dantelem, so she was already a year ago, so she's down as being changed to permanent status. And then once, if the board approves, we do have one of our IRIs here tonight.
Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry.
So, you know, we've said what a difference a year makes. You know, a year ago, we were, you know, searching and scrimping for bus drivers, and now we, just with a few tweaks and some change in personnel here and there, it's been fantastic. So we've had a great, uh, great year so far, end of last year. And today we have just nothing but high regard from Kathy McCollough, Linda Calvo, Sharon over at the transportation for Angel Ramos. Angel, he's been here since five o'clock. Angel Dan very much, he's doing a fantastic job. Keep up the great work, we appreciate it, but welcome to Highland.
Okay.
Now you can go home. Thanks, go.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Myers has finally arrived. Students were overjoyed to see her, staff as well. She had a warm welcome from all of the staff, especially Ms. Sylvester. I have to give her a shout out, she brought her gummies because she knows that she likes them. So I thought that was really sweet. When I asked her how she felt, she said she was just happy to be back and ready to be back in her new groove. Um, so over the past two weeks, I'm gonna touch upon Spirit Week. We had a district-wide Spirit Week, and, uh, we had, that was leading up to homecoming, which we won forty-seven to thirty. Okay, um, so then we did one throughout just the high school, and that was leading up to the Black Eagle Bowl. We lost that, but that was okay. Um, seniors won Hudson Husky, branding rights only. It was close, though, sophomores, we thought we were gonna take them. And then this year, a lot of students had brought to my attention that there was a lot more staff participation in Spirit Week. Mr. Zimmer, I have to call you out on this, your Broback Thursday, your outfit was totally rocking.
It was a disco. It was, it should've been a leisure suit, it was a disco...
He took it right out of his clothes.
Get his hat!
Twitter page.
Well, I can say it was disco, that's all.
I think I got a picture of that.
Yeah.
You'll have to forget.
If you wanna see that, next board meeting.
Um, there's been two field trips over the past week. One was to the, um, New Windsor Contonman, and the other was the Bronze Botanical Gardens. The Apish students and the Art students took the one to the Botanical Gardens. And while they were viewing and learning about beautiful flowers, they also learned about Georgia O'Keefe and how she was one of the first women activists, not necessarily politically, but just through her painting, she got her work out there. Then this past Thursday, there was a blood drive throughout the high school, and proud to say that there was twenty-seven units of blood that were donated. So they helped over fifty people. That was really impressive. This weekend, the National Honor Society students will be taking it in a cleanup, a highway cleanup in Highland. And then the high school students are currently in the process of naming hallways throughout the high school. That's funded by the PTSA, so we just wanna give them a shout out and say thank you for that. That's all I have. Thank you, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Oh, hey, no, now we got it. Business in operation, budget transfer be resolved. The Board of Education bound recommendation is superintendent brief the following budget transfer for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number two eight five one, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Camille. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Adoption of the annual independent audit two thousand seventeen, eighteen be resolved. The Board of Education of the Highland Central School District acknowledged receipt of and accepts the annual regulatory report of the district auditor, James G. Cruiser, CPA PC, for the school year two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and the corrective action plan and gives us authorization to file this resolution with the Commissioner of Education. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Camille. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
So carry. Now, Sarah.
All right, well, I'd like to add one other thing to our discussion about Spirit Week last week. We had mentioned that the Highland Support Association, HSA, was doing a Stuff the Bus, um, activity for the homecoming game. People could get into the game free if they brought a non-perishable good to donate to our backpack program. So that was a great success. The varsity boys football team met us the next morning at the Methodist church where, um, where food is being stored and where we're putting together the backpacks to help us unload the baskets. And we had well over thirty boxes of, boxes and bags of, of goods to contribute to that program. So a big thank you to the Highland community for continuing to support our students and our programs. And thank you to the, the boys for being there the next morning after, you know, a, a good game, but a tiring one. And they will be doing, another, HSA will be doing another Stuff the Bus. I believe the date is November fourth, outside of Hannaford, so... And there are boxes in each of the three buildings, so that if you're not going to be at Hannaford and you'd like to contribute to the backpack program, even if you get it to us, we'll get it to the box to add to that Stuff the Bus. So, um, thank you for continuing that. I did want to add that, I, I think I said early on that, um, we have a digital signup list to help pack the backpacks, and that's pretty well full through, through mid-December already. And, um, our teachers, and especially Mary Anastalia, who is one of the secretaries in the food service department, they've really just taken it and gone with it, and they organize and make sure that there's someone there, and they know what they're going to give, you know, how to pack the bags, and, and really communicating a lot. So, um, just a huge appreciation for everyone who's involved in that whole program. I'm continuing to meet with all of the grade levels and departments. I think I have about three more meetings this week, that's been very helpful. We've been looking at the professional development plan, which you approved last week, and looking at what those individual grade levels or departments, what parts of the PD plan they want to focus on so that we can better plan our professional development throughout the year. So that, so that's been very helpful. You know, it's nice when you sit down with a grade level together just to hear the perspective on, on what we're doing, and what we can do better, and, and what people need. So that's been very helpful. I'm also helping with... I'm also helping with observations at the elementary school until our new administrator can be trained with that. So that's exciting for me to be in, um, elementary school classrooms since it's not my, um, the place that I spent most of my teaching career. It's great to be in there and I've been seeing, uh, a lot of the Teachers College work. And then I also will be doing throughout the year, um, I'm the, the third observer for all of our non-tenure teachers, so I'm major of the classrooms for that. This Saturday, very exciting from the elementary school, Teachers College in, at Columbia University. They have what's called the Saturday reunion. They do one in October and they do one in March. And it's a free day, teachers can go down and it's, it's a huge conference about Teachers College, readers, and writers workshops. And so six of our teachers are actually going to have a bus from school, they did this last year as well, um, go down and it's, it's kind of a fend-for-yourself event. You get down there and, and from what the teachers tell me, I mean, you, sometimes you have to sit in the floor, on the floor in the sessions, but you get lots of good materials from the people who have designed and done, um, done this whole program. So six of our teachers are going to be going down this weekend, uh, to do that. So that's exciting stuff from, um, from our Teachers College work. We also have next week, um, the foundations program, the phonics program, we're starting in kindergarten, first grade. We have the first big overview from the company, the coach from the company coming to meet with our kindergarten teachers on Tuesday and our, um, first grade teachers on Thursday to again give them, they've been, you know, stepping their toes into the work, but this will be their, their real overview. And then we have four coaching days for each of those, um, grade levels across the rest of the year. So they'll get the, the overview and then they'll get more personalized help from the coach throughout the year as they're, as they're getting more and more into the program. So that's exciting work there. Next week, we have a team of teachers that's going to High Tech High, the professional development that's being offered by, um, through Ulster Bosse's. So I'll have warrant report on that at our next meeting. I'm excited to see what that is about. Patrick is going to go with me as well. And we have four teachers who are attending. And the last thing, uh, but I'm going to wait until the, uh, until you approve of the technology plan Carol and I, actually Carol did most of the work for it, but, um, we'll talk about that a little bit later when we get back.
Okay, any questions for Sarah?
I was thinking here, the teachers are taking advantage of all this continuing education.
You know what's really amazing too about Teachers College is they have an entire social media environment for Teachers College specifically. So there's a lot of teachers that are using, uh, Facebook to exchange, because this is a national program, to exchange ideas and resources across the country. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting.
And is Facebook available through our district computer system?
To teachers.
To teachers.
Open to teachers.
Glad Carol was here.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to talk about the board retreat, so just, it's mentioned later on under old business. So, uh, we did get responses from, I believe, everyone that November seventh, that will be the date for the board retreat, six P M. We'll just do it right here, uh, N thirty-two. We will get food. And I, I think we could probably get some homemade items for dessert perhaps.
And it will be wrapped.
Maybe apple pie. Yes.
It's insane.
So would you like to review how we are presently rolling out technology district-wide? Then discuss, uh, really the vision of the board and the vision of the administration, you know, as far as technology usage and what we want it to look like in the next one, two, three, four, and five years. It'll be important for us to share ideas, um, so at the end of the day, you know, we're all, you know, on the same page. There's a lot, we have a lot of technology out there. I know that Carol provided, um, we're at the board and a report about that, but we just, we want to make sure that we are all kind of, we're all kind of thinking the same way and okay, you know, what do we want this to look like? How do we want to continue it? You know, what's the replacement cycle? So these will be the conversations that we'll have. Prior to that date though, let us know what information that the board would like as far as any other information about technology or the ideas so that we can make November seventh as productive as possible. So we're meeting as administration, as we have a team prior to that, to organize ourselves. But if you have any other information, anything else that you would like, um, and certainly, you know, uh, we can talk just really in general also, just about, you know, vision for the district also at our retreat. And the things, uh, moving on, I, I know it was already mentioned, but again, the Mid-Hudson Study Council is this Thursday night. And it's all, I always said, it's all about people, all about relationships. Sue and I were at, uh, you know, the Ulster County School Board and, and it was about poverty and, uh, and talked about relationships. But, you know, Sue and I also saw, you know, we're doing a lot of the things that, that the presenter talked about. You know, we're doing it already. And that's, that's nice to see, but it's really, it's about the people you have and, you know, any organization is only as good as the people in it. And, you know, just Dr. Path and Marion Ingram are just two of many, many incredible people who meet people in public, make students feel special, feel wanted, feel loved. So, um, that's fantastic. And the Monday message was just yesterday was a famous Bon Jovi's one borrowed, "To continue to do more than what's expected." Anyone can do what's expected. You expect people to do what's expected. That's why it's called expected. But if you really want to excel, you want to do more than what's expected. So I gave examples to the students that, and I don't know if you, if your parent, you know, tell or ask you to clean your room, you know, clean your room or maybe clean another room in the house without, without, you know, like, go clean the footrest room. That isn't asking a lot. But if they're assigned questions one, three, and five by the teacher, do one, two, three, four, and five. Do a little extra, do a little bit more than what's expected. I, you know, I try, I probably, I don't always reach it, but I try to, you know, give that as an example of this in my own actions, to do more than what's expected, to, to be there and to do a little bit more than what people expect. And, um, you know, I don't have any great comments, I don't think the district, as Karen said, just, it's not just, it's not just the data, it's really the district as a whole, the attitude, the, the feeling in the district. We are definitely moving in a great direction. So I'm very happy. So that's all.
Any questions for the superintendent? I'll, uh, I'll probably email you some of the, you know, considerations going into that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Board of Education, new business donation acceptance. Be resolved, the Board of Education, based upon recommendation, superintendent accepts the donation from Harrison Letterie, five piece enforcer drum set valued at approximately three hundred dollars to be used to support the development of the middle school jazz band. Can I have a motion please? Heather, Camille. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, and we will send a thank you out to Harrison.
Yes, thank you very much for the donation.
Memorandum of Agreement, stipends be resolved, the Board of Education, based upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following memorandum of agreement between Highland Central School District and Highland Teachers Association titled Instructional and Extracurricular Stipends effective for school year two thousand eighteen, nineteen as presented to the Board at this evening. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille. Discussion?
I'm just curious for the modified lacrosse coach, does that, does that go there or?
Yes, I believe we filled, I'm pretty sure we did get all the coaching positions filled. Yes. So again, I, I, I just want to explain for the board and for the public, so we have, you know, study after study shows that, you know, you want to help kids be successful and want to get them involved, keep them involved in school, clubs, activities. We've had a number of activities or, or clubs that have existed for many years that were always voluntary. And this has, this was part of the HTA contract that we wanted to formalize a way to make, to get new clubs formed. So these clubs have already been in existence for multiple years. So Sarah and I met with, uh, representatives from HTA and we really, we looked at the current stipends in the contract and then just compared them to similar clubs as far as activity level and responsibilities. And that's, so those numbers, we didn't make those up, those are numbers that are already in the contract for similar size and, you know, as far as busyness of the clubs. The, those coaching positions, those are all, those new coaching positions are ones that we budgeted for last year. And this is just for HTA now to recognize those titles so that before we print the contract, we can put all these new titles in.
Do we have any remaining un, un volunteer clubs that are, aren't stipended? Do we have any?
So it was, uh, really, I, I gave the charge to HTA to come to me with, give me the list of the ones that you feel are viable clubs and have been volunteer. And these are the ones that they, they brought up to us. So these are the viable, active volunteer clubs.
And every one of those has been existence for at least four years, three years. Fed Challenge is probably the most recent one. Everything else has been, some of them.
Many years.
Ten years.
With staff donating their time to make sure it's run.
Yes, the rest.
So, you know, I'm actually very happy to, to get to this point with some of these clubs and really formalize them.
What will happen, uh, I, I believe we still have varsity, uh, JV football.
Right, so we're going to leave both of them in the contract and then depending on the numbers, so, so that we can have either, so next year or the year after, if we have enough students for JV football, then we would just, we would have that title and that coaching in there also. So it'll just depend on the numbers.
Did we not, uh, massage these numbers because of not having JV?
We did massage these numbers.
So what happens if we incorporate, if we go back to a JV program? Do these numbers get reduced down to what they previously were or now we're going to increase JV football?
So it would go back to if we have JV football, there's a JV football stipend already.
Right, which is far less than these stipends because we tweaked these a little bit because we eliminated JV football.
Yeah, so I, I actually looked back at the approved, um, rates that we have and the varsity that's in this MOA is the same as what's already approved.
The schedule should line up.
Modified A.
We modified, we, we.
Modified A is higher.
Okay, so varsity, I know we modified one.
Yeah, this is, the total amount's about two thousand dollars less actually than what we had.
Just curious on the modified A, the thinking of, because even the, um, the head coach is significantly above what the JV coach was for football? Just wondering what the thought, like, thought process, is it because of the number of kids?
There'll be more, there's more kids on the team. Yeah.
That, that's my concern, if we go back to JV, then JV would have to be increased more than modified than it currently is.
Well, but if we go back to, if we go back to JV, we would have the traditional modified, which would also still be in the contract as a stipend.
But.
We have the JV, which is in the contract as a stipend and the varsity.
That, you know, that's why they don't come out.
So this one's going to go away then?
If we go back.
It would go dormant.
It would go dormant.
I mean, is it worded that way in a, in a contract, in an MOA that this will revert back to, uh, two thousand eighteen?
It's not written that way, you're right, that that would be, but, but there's also just a, we certainly can tweak that if you'd like, but it's also, it's similar to, you know, there's sometimes club, there's clubs that are in the contract that have a number connected to them, but we don't necessarily fund them if there's no participation.
Correct, no, I understand that.
That's how I.
And, and you can't really, sorry, you can't really have modified A if you have a JV team because modified A is ninth graders and the JV would be part of the, or the.
Because of the title modified A, that would go away and it would be just modified JV.
That would be unfilled.
Yeah.
Unfill the modified.
Otherwise, there's a big, big difference here. Okay, so going, going backwards to Camille's question about the modified boys team, um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we were presenting, the presentation made to us to form that team, correct?
The modi, right, this modified, yes.
Lacrosse, alright.
Oh, the lacrosse, I'm sorry.
Lacrosse, that's, yeah, that's what I said, yeah. With that being said, um, potentially, um, as the model is with the girl's boy teams right now, to combine teams with Marlboro, uh, is there any talk of that even being a possibility, not a modified team?
I know, I know that Marlboro had asked us, but we don't want to do that yet because we want to see what kind of participation we have from our own kids.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that's a potential.
It could be potential, yes.
Okay. But they have to approach us.
Yes, and they would have to agree to it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just a question on the, um, varsity gymnastics, the stipend for that, how many students do we have in that last year? The stipend just seems high for the amount of students I think that we had.
I don't know what we had last year, I think there's a seventy or else this year.
Alright.
I think there's more than last year.
Yeah.
Right, does that seem, I mean, I just wonder what we compared that to?
They look at other varsity sports.
Yeah, I think you look at other varsity sports, um, and also I'm sure it's also the time consideration.
Because they, they practice off-site, that they're not practicing on, on, in Highland, so every day is travel essentially.
And actually, in the former life, was an assistant gymnastics coach. And the amount of time that gymnastics takes is incredible.
This is fifty cents an hour, any one of these.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
A lot of us have been coaches, you know what it is.
Yep. That's a story for another day though.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Technology plan, be resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following, Board of Education policy titled Instructional Technology Plan two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one as presented to the Board this meeting. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille. Discussion?
Do you want to start, Carol, or you want me to?
Whatever you want.
Well, Carol, she does have a little something to put up on the board just to have up there. It's really what you have in your pocket mainly, but I do want to, um, thank Carol for the, the amount of work that she did over the summer to put together the technology plan. And you have two documents. The one is the highlights that we kind of pulled out so that it's the kind of easy-to-read version. The other is the printout from what Carol needs to submit into the, um, the portal to the state. Yes.
It's how they.
Sue, exactly, yes. That's all the information we have in there and it's not the most reader-friendly, um, format. So we thought we would pull out, much like we did with the professional development plan, we thought we would pull out the major goals. And again, like the professional development plan, since this is a plan that in theory goes over four years, three years, um, and our Smart Schools money, anything we propose in Smart Schools money has to be reflected in our technology plan. So you try to build it with as much elasticity as you can so that any direction that we may choose to go with technology can be found in these goals. And of course, it has to include not only the instructional technology, but all of the infrastructure and all of that as well. So, um, so that's, that's what we tried to do and, you know, in a very short way, um, I just encapsulated the major amount of work that Carol did over the summer.
Right, so.
Exactly.
So I, just as a little background on how we came up with this, we had our tech committee meet last spring a couple times and we did our old roundtable with the students. We talked a lot about growth and needs and thoughts. A lot of teachers are on that tech committee and it was really valuable. We came up with our technology vision in that tech committee and in the meantime, to get to that process, there were a lot of sheets all stuck around the room. All the little, small groups came up with their own vision. But what was interesting, after we derived. But what was interesting, after we derived the, the technology vision, those sheets just spoke, there was a lot of common ideas, a lot of common thoughts, a lot of common language that I was able to take and derive and build some goals out of. And they were pretty consensus, it was, they were goals that I thought that all the tech committee like agreed upon and we presented it back to the tech committee, we had a school ag group and there was discussion about it. State makes you come up with the goals, then the state makes you create action step items and in the actual plan that you present to the state, you have to come up with timelines and timeframes. But that was difficult because I don't think that, I feel that this tech plan is a growth plan. I think that Highland is on a great tremendous growth with their mobile devices and their mobile learning that's going on in their classrooms. So I couldn't make anything real specific to be measurable at a certain point in time. We're doing really great with our infrastructure upgrade that took place four, five years ago. We built our E, our wireless network all with our E-rate money. There's a huge growth in devices and the last report I gave to the board was in January when I did the data for you for tonight, in the middle school and high school alone. There's 65% growth rate in mobile devices, laptops really in those two buildings since January. So there's, in those two buildings, they're more than a one-to-one mobile device, you know, ratio, student-to-computer ratio now, just for laptops and iPads in those two buildings. So that's tremendous growth, that's not counted in the labs and the workstations and the libraries and all the teacher computers and student computers in the classrooms. So we've had a lot of growth in a very short time. So the, the other thing I wanted to note there was the oldest laptop parts in use in the district in any three buildings, there's one part in each building that were purchased in spring of 2015. So we're, our oldest laptop in use with students really, really right now is three and a half years old and that's much better shape than we were, say, even two or three years ago. So we've done a lot of work. We still have some, I put in my report, ready to deploy, we're working on that, some of it's easy, it just, you know, it's, we have new staffing, it's a little slower than I'd like, but we're really working on it, we're really pushing it. So this plan kind of just reflects the continued growth. There's growth in teacher work, teachers are comfortable picking up a laptop and putting some type of embedded technology into a lesson plan now, so this plan is pretty much just based on that. A lot of this plan, if the, the action items are kind of based on professional development, you can see where it's really becoming embedded and integrated, the technology, it's just, it's not, we don't necessarily have to worry about finding money to buy things as much like we used to like 10 years ago because it's there, it's working, everything's running well, knock on wood. And teachers are getting more and more professional development on how to use it, the things like teachers college, everything has technology in it. So I had to write things, there's things you'll see in the tech, some of these action steps, there, I put stuff in there maybe for some staffing and I don't think the state will ever really support staffing, but you have to kind of add it in there because it might be something we're gonna wanna do to grow. I put a lot of STEM and STEAM type things in there, you know, because you have to, you know, you have to write it in case the state ever will fund it, but I really believe that we're going there, we're there. So the other thing that's in the state plan that you'll see is you'll see a cost. They may be put a cost down, it's almost impossible to really tell what that is, so you over, you know, you do some of it over measure and you over emphasize it, you overestimate it. I just based it on what our budget is now, what I, what I know now to be true, what I assume to be true. If we add a person, I, I have an idea what it costs to add a person in. So those numbers are not really anything that can be added up and, you know, full, you know, funded now.
Well, and I think the other thing too is when you have, you know, parts of these goals overlap.
They overlap.
So when I was going through the, what was on the portal, you know, you're, you're putting a dollar amount next to something that actually is almost in three different places. So it's the same amount, but, you know, if you, if you just did a line and added it a lot, it would look like $90,000 instead of $30,000.
And in the timeline for most of the action steps, I just put for the end of the plan because like I said, it's a growth thing, there's not really anything we can really measure. It's not like we can say we need to have wireless infrastructure in by September 2019, we have that. So we just wanna leave it in the plan, upgrade, replace, expand as necessary and just over the life of the plan. So, just to leave us open to that. I did duplicate some of the action steps like Sarah said across the goals because I thought it was important to put into different, the different goals. One of the goals was more focused on professional development, one of the goals is based more on STEM learning, STEAM learning, flexible learning spaces, more modern technologies and some of those action steps will overlap into those. And the one that the tech, tech committee didn't really address was the infrastructure, so I added that, you have to have all that in there. And new things to infrastructure will, I think that the state is looking for our more cybersecurity plans and ideas, so I, I wrote some of that in there, we're doing a lot of work on that now. And just leaving us open to more bandwidth, I, we're gonna have to do that, we talked about it a couple of years ago, I actually thought it kind of happened, but I'm not sure that it did. But we're gonna need that when we do our CBT district wide, probably, more than likely.
CBT is computer-based testing.
Coming fast.
Yeah, so I just wanted to show you just some of these, these things and this goal, the 21st century skills, a lot of these were really written by the, the tech committee, really increasing the opportunities in this goal three, increase STEAM opportunities throughout the content areas. There's something in there for supports for teachers, I talked about building upon existing K-12, K-STEAM curriculum coursework, because I know that we wanna do that, K-12, we're working on it now, there's a lot of talk about inbury learning and process-based learning going on, there's projects going on in the middle school right now. So this goal, goal four was more about equitable access and so we have to talk about the equitable access, we have to talk about loan out programs for students, stuff that's not really funded right now. We do okay patching it, but we should, we should come up with a concrete plan.
Just 'cause it has bearing, I think, you know, when we had those discussions, equitable access is something, you know, we'll be talking about. So we've got X number of cards, let's say in the high school, but where are they positioned? Does each subject area have two, like math department has two, science department has two, or where are they housed, how are they accessed? Do they go to specific people with training? Those are the types of things that I'm gonna be asking.
Yeah, okay, yep, that's important. And then there's the one about just maintaining the infrastructure, just putting some action plans in there, maintain it. Any questions?
What's your bandwidth that now that we've purchased through the RIT?
Well, we get the 120 now and they upped that on the basic plan and I, and that changed right at the beginning of the summer, so I don't really have the accurate number, I'll get back to that.
So usually their levels of service are like 200 mag, then you jump to 500.
Yeah, it's a little different here, they said they don't pool it, but they pool it, I mean, you know, so we all get that basic, I think it's 120 mag and then they gave us another 20 and then we were supposed to add, we were supposed to have dedicated, Highland was supposed to get dedicated another 200, I think, based on those CBT numbers? And I'm not quite sure where that is.
I think that's where we gotta start talking about when the budget gets there, 'cause...
I thought we had it budgeted and I'm not quite sure and working with Bosie's and Allison in her transition to her new job, I'm not sure where that, where that fell. They put in some new equipment over here and I have to really get someone to sit down and tell me what we're really getting. I'm not really quite sure of that right now.
You experience any latency? Okay, alright.
No, I think.
So it's not a current issue?
It's not a current issue and we did the field testing, we, we.
Is that true for all the buildings? I mean, they might experience something different over here central than the buildings.
No, I haven't heard any.
What about your wireless?
And our wireless is, we still have some access points to put up, we still have some dead spots, but we have them. We have the, you know, the E-rate, they just gave delivered more, configured some more access points for us. The only real hole right now with wireless would be the outside fields, we don't have the outside pieces yet, but internally, you know, it's good. The tech committee last year, basically building level, they came up with goals, we met those goals for September for the building, so I think we're in really good shape and we can talk about where is stuff going and, we still need more, we're supplying more, still, people want it, you know, but there's, I think that everyone's comfortable knowing where to grab it and knowing where to get it and what device they want. So I think we've come leaps and bounds personally. Any other questions?
It's amazing how far you've come, you know, you've been here, what, how many years?
Nine, this is my ninth year.
I, I remember you standing up way, way in the beginning and there were so many folks that were resistant to technology and look at us now.
Really just, I said this in the last meeting, you really just don't see that anymore. You know, going to faculty meetings at the beginning of the year, answering questions, talking about where we wanted to go, what they needed, so much positivity with using tech and teachers are really, really changing the way that they run a room, run a classroom, it's really exciting.
Yeah, when I attended the open houses, you know, they're very, you know, I think every teacher spoke about how technology impacts there, you know, how they deliver it, how students interact with it, so it was very widespread.
Okay, any other questions for Carol? Thank you, Carol.
That's a vote.
Okay, can, we got a motion, all over favor? I oppose. So Carrie, audit committee. At least, we're still looking for community volunteers, the committee. Haven't we put out, we just made, we haven't put out for community volunteers for our audit committee? Isn't that the one we have, two sitting community members on it?
Yeah, right.
That'll be in any current.
That's correct, that'd be on the, we don't have, I'm sorry.
Community members on it.
No, they don't have it in the document.
So it's just the three board members that are currently on there? Are there any others?
Do you need a reminder for that?
I, I will, yes.
Yeah, I can get that too.
But more importantly, I need a date for a meeting.
Okay, I'll give the names to you that's on it, actually, I'll look at it, it's a talk.
Yeah, Julie, she sends out dates.
Yeah, we should, we'll send them the dates, so you, you pick dates, they're good for you.
We'll respond to them if they're.
They'll respond.
Hence, that's how we've been doing it, but I feel there's a better way of doing it.
No, no, that's fine. Now, there will be something on the November 13 agenda and it's called a reserve plan and school districts are required to have this reserve plan. Currently Highland does not, so I really would like to meet with the audit committee prior to November 13th or the next board meeting, I don't know, I'm saying the 13th, if that's possible, to review.
Depending who's on the audit committee, maybe you can meet, we're meeting at six on the seventh, November 7th, maybe you can meet at five.
We didn't still Heather and I, but who took the?
I'm with that.
Someone took Debbie's spot.
This is a, a reserve plan for reserves in addition to the 4% unencumbered?
Yep, yeah, your existing reserves, one more than your established.
Me, Ellen, Sue.
Me?
I don't think you were there, Sue. You weren't there, I remember this now.
Staff wasn't there for that.
That's what happened, you missed the meeting.
Yeah.
You got put out of committee.
Not it.
So send, you'll send some dates down.
Probably was.
They'll respond.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that date, we'll get that date together and we'll see if everybody's available.
Great.
Can the old business of Board of Education Policy Number 6121, second reading, do you resolve the Board of Education based upon recommendations sub-tenant approve the following Board of Education policy titled sexual harassment of district personnel, Number 6121 as presented to the Board at this meeting? Have a motion please, motion by Mike, second by Camille, discussion.
Yeah.
All over favor?
I.
Oppose. So Carrie.
Oh, will you, will you?
Yes. Sorry. Draw the vote.
There's language in here that is kind of ambiguous, it talks about putting letters in people's files if they're accused and if there's an investigation done, doesn't say anything about a letter coming out of somebody's file if it's found to be baseless.
Well, district personnel files are usually mentioned in each contract.
So the accuser, the accused gets a letter put in their file, does the person making the accusation get a letter put in their file as being an initiator of that complaint?
Well, usually those have to be investigated first.
There's a whole process. Right, no one would get a letter in their body until it's found it.
No, it doesn't say that, doesn't say that. Once the accusation is made, there's a letter put in the employee's personnel file.
Okay, you may be logged in and bring that up.
You're gonna look at probably page three or four, nine, six, parabrisht two.
It's a good estimate.
Shall we take a series?
The investigation of the parabrisht report, the investigation report shall be filed in the employee's personnel file.
The investigation shall be parabrisht and report the investigation.
Okay, and then it says the outcome of the investigation of the sexual harassment complaint shall be related to the complaint and to the accused.
Right, so you tell both who, the person that complained as well as that person who was the accused, what the outcome of, yeah, what happened in the investigation, so everyone knows where it is.
But it doesn't say that it ever goes away. It could be baseless.
Well, but that would be in the report.
That would be in the file, wouldn't it?
Right.
Well, it'd be accused.
But that, it would be marked as baseless in, in their file.
Doesn't really say that.
That's what the report would do.
Yes, it does.
Was that a change, I don't believe that was a change from our prior policies, that particular.
It doesn't say, it really doesn't, it's, it's too murky, it doesn't say that that happens. It just says the report is.
Because usually there's, you know, you've got a complaint form, there's a whole administrative reg that usually supports this.
If you read this and weigh so that it's not.
But, I mean, a full investigation, when you write the report of investigation, it says the outcome of the investigation.
There's different levels of, there's different levels of investigation, it says that in the very beginning, but it never backtracks if it's found to be baseless.
Well, I would think that the, I mean, following this, the report still be in there with the binding.
We're using terms like we would think and possibly.
Well, the binding would be as, would be the result of the investigation, would be in there, I mean, much like we would do if we had a DASTA report, if it's found baseless, it's still a report and we still keep a copy of that. And, and part of that is to, you know, if it's found baseless at one point in time, but then we continue to have an accusation over five years.
I think Mr. Miller's asking, if it was found to be baseless, why would it go in the first period?
And that's what I'm just saying, is that sometimes it might be found baseless in this initial investigation, but then over a period of five years, you continue to get the same complaints about the same, it's part of building a file.
And what if you don't? When does it ever go away? Does it ever sun?
Yeah, we could, you know, I see your point, Mr. Miller, you know, we don't have to approve this tonight necessarily.
No.
Yeah, we'll have the attorneys look at that, we'll ask them to weigh in on.
Let's take a look at the prior, you know, what the policy said.
So we'll take a look at that, okay?
There's a lot of good language in here.
On sentence twenty-third, I think.
Yeah, we'll go to the third reading, that's fine.
If it's materially changed, does that process restart? None of that, one or two, just.
I'm not sure.
You'll be talking to the attorney.
We'll ask them, yes. And then, you know, we'll see what they say. They might say, no, this is how it has to be.
It's not saying that the report should go both in the accused or the complaint's file.
It doesn't really, doesn't really, doesn't really say.
It's in the employee's personnel file. So it's not the accused or the complaint?
It really, it doesn't say that, it doesn't clearly define.
Well, policy sometimes doesn't lead.
It's the procedure that would.
But.
It's ambiguous.
Questions are questions, questions need answers.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the, get an opinion on that. Yeah, we'll look, we'll, we'll get the, get an opinion on that.
Okay. Actually, it was reviewed by counsel on July, on the twenty-fourth.
Right, I know, but, okay, we'll ask this.
Yeah, not a question, right.
Yep, let me ask the, you do the reading.
Yep. Alright, uh, Board of Education Policy eight-two-seven-one, second reading, be it resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following Board of Education Policy Title, Internet Safety, Internet Content Filtering, eight-two-seven-one, as presented to the board this meeting, have a motion please, motion by Camille, second by Mike, discussion.
Just the, the paragraph about, it's, it says, under the protecting children in twenty-first century act, talks about, uh, children issued education, I'm just curious what raise that's done and is revient at.
Sorry, what page is that?
It's, uh, second.
And about where, on the page?
It's the second page, and it's Internet Safety.
Safety instruction?
Yeah. And so the second paragraph, it just talks about students who will also be educated on appropriate interactions with other individuals, on social networking sites, websites, and chat rooms, as well as cyberbullying, awareness and response, just curious where that's happening at.
Well, cyberbullying, definitely, we do a lot at the middle school with the, our instruction on DASTA, that's a, that's a huge part of it now, um, and then the Internet Safety, I would say, right now, a lot of that is at the middle school in our technology courses.
We do a lot in sixth grade with it.
Yeah.
It's also in access where they start to get their individual accounts usually at that sixth grade level, wasn't it getting earlier or not?
Yeah, and, you know, because we don't really have a set curriculum for the K-five, it's, it's teacher-directed more, um, since we have a TA.
We're media center specialists, they see every kid.
Yeah, I do think Gore is doing some stuff with fourth, the third, fourth, and fifth.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Joel.
Libraries.
Second grade, the library does work with that, too. So I mean, I, I think that's part of our overall conversation about our K-12, and that, that was part of the professional development plan as well, um, you know, how are we going to talk about, um, etiquette, digital citizenship from a K-12 perspective? We, we really haven't addressed that.
And the students, I mean, they're, they're on it more, they're on it at home, even at younger ages, so it's important that we get ahead of that.
Absolutely.
Sarah, I just want them, uh, reviewed by counsel, or this is a new one?
This is a brand-new one.
Okay, so they, they forward it to us?
Um, we actually got it from Erie One, but it was one of the things we found out as we were doing the technology plan, that we didn't have this policy in print, so, uh, we got the, the, uh, template from Erie One, we sent that to our district council, they reviewed that.
They reviewed this one, too?
Yes.
I, I want to see that.
But, yeah, this would be the initial adoption.
Any, uh, other discussion? All over favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Board retreat, we already spoke about that, November seventh, sixteen AM, um, anything for, uh, who will pay the district? Okay, we'll open the meeting up for public comment. And close, public comment, um, any other discussion, any other, any other decisions? Okay, I'll, motion to adjourn. Motion by Henry, second by Camille, all over favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Thank you, everyone.